All right, Mr. Tilly, here we go. Welcome. I'd like to call the May 21st, 2020 West Sacramento Planning Commission meeting to order. We are meeting via teleconference this evening pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, by which members of the Planning Commission and staff are participating via live video conference to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Members of the public have been invited to watch the meeting via wave cable, Channel 20, or streaming online through the city's website. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commission page. Comments submitted by 5:00 PM via email to the Planning Commission clerk as public comments are posted on the city website, along with the agenda and the link to the live streaming video of this meeting, so that all Planning Commissioners and members of the public can see complete text and submittal information. The Planning Commission clerk will note the commenters for each item. Okay, with that, we will proceed to tonight's agenda. First agenda item is General Administration Functions, 1A, Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the Commission. I will look towards our Mr. Clerk to inform us whether or not we have any public comments.
There are no public comments for item 1A.
All right. Moving on to General Administration Function, Item B, Correspondence and Staff Communication from the Planning Commission Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, thank you Chair Lebig. For the benefit of anyone who may be watching the live stream tonight or on television, this is our first meeting of the Planning Commission since the COVID-19 pandemic and the related public health orders have been in place. So we are tonight doing our first meeting via Zoom. The City Council has been meeting this way weekly since this matter began. But in keeping with our efforts to keep as many of our projects moving forward as much as we can, we have now got to the point where we're ready to host a Planning Commission meeting, formal meeting with formal projects before it, albeit via Zoom. So tonight, that is here and we are live streaming. Also, the Commission should have received a few matters of correspondence via email earlier today, some communications from my staff and then some communications from the representatives of each of the two projects on the night. We, our staff during the staff presentation will address those memos. I'm not aware of us having received any additional comments from members of the public tonight for either item. So with that, we'll turn it back over to you Chair Lebig.
All right, thank you, Mr. Tilly. Moving on to General Administration Function, C, Disclosure of Exparte Communications. Planning Commissioners should at this time disclose any communications that they've had with applicants or members of the community on items on the agenda.
So I did receive an email from one of the owners for item 2, and she just expressed her excitement for the project.
Any others? All right, thank you. At this time, we will move on to the Consent Agenda, which is consideration and approval of the minutes from the March 5th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Can I have a motion or comments?
I'd like to make a motion to approve. This is Commissioner Austin.
Moved by Vice Chair Austin.
Second, Commissioner Castillo.
Seconded by Commissioner Castillo. Mr. Clerk, I'm going to turn it over to you for a roll call vote.
All right. Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard.
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon.
Aye.
Commissioner Strumpf.
Aye.
Chairman, Chair Lebig.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. Moving on to the regular agenda, this is the Public Hearing Regarding Proposed Tentative Subdivision Map 5193, Design Review, and Washington-Specific Plan Minor Deviations for the Washington Commons Cohousing Project. At this point, before I turn this over to Mr. Laffey, I just want to outline, I think, our approach to this, given this is our first teleconference. So first, we will hear the staff presentation. I believe the applicant is present, so we will ask whether or not the applicant has a presentation or is just available for questions or comment. We will hear whether or not there are public comments on it. Open up the agenda, hear from the applicant. Hear any, now we will not be hearing from public comments. Public comments are all available online and have been available since 5:00 PM. So then we will move towards questions and deliberation with the Planning Commission before closing the public hearing and then voting on the items. So before we turn it over to Mr. Laffey, Mr. Clerk, were there any public comments on this item?
Yes, there were two. I will pull those up right now. Are you guys able to see the public comment? On my screen?
Yes, it was there and...
There were the two. Those were posted online.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, Mr. Laffey?
Thank you, Chair Lebig, and good evening, everyone. I have a PowerPoint that the Clerk is going to load up here real quick. All right, there it is. So the Washington Commons Cohousing Project is back before you tonight as a public hearing item. It was previously before the Commission on February 20th as a public workshop. So as has been noted before, you have two public comments for this item. One of them is a memo from the applicant that we received this morning, and I'll go into that a little bit. And then the applicant also has a presentation and they're going to go more in depth on what's in that memo. And then the other public comment we received is a layer of support from the members of, that are buying into this cohousing community. And for anybody watching online, these are both available on the city's website under the Planning Commission Agenda. They're both uploaded as a PDF. So then if you can go to the next slide. So I'll give a brief overview of this project. I know it was workshopped a couple of months ago. I'll give a brief introduction. So it's at 316 330 G Street. It's in the Washington-Specific Plan area. It is zoned waterfront. That's a high-density mixed-use zoning, which allows up to 120 dwelling units to the acre. The site is a little over half an acre and it was, did come before the Planning Commission on February 20th. All right, so next slide. So I'll give a little overview of the materials here. The main exterior material is gray fiber cement siding with light gray and tan stucco and some wood accent cladding. And then you can see it's four stories. There are 35 residential units and 35 parking spaces that are all on the ground floor. And the ground floor is mostly active uses, community meeting spaces, and the residential units are above that. And then on the second floor, there is an internal rooftop terrace area for the residents. And in the back, there's also a garden area. So next slide. So this project, there's a few things that we're asking, the applicant is asking Planning Commission to decide on for tonight. The first is a tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes. The next one is design review. And then there's also a few Washington-Specific Plan Minor Deviations. The, let me go back. So the applicant has a fairly robust presentation, and there are a few minor revisions from what you saw at the workshop, and those revisions are incorporating comments and feedback from the Commission. One of the things that was talked about a lot at the workshop was the trash area and how that would function. So we've gotten some additional feedbacks from Waste Management. The area between the driveway for the garage and then the area where the trash would be rolled out, they're recommending that that be no parking, so that the dumpsters could be located there on the street. And then the trash truck itself can roll up on the street, pick them up. So it would be one parking space that would be striped for no parking. We had added a condition of approval for that. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Commission if they have any questions, but it sounds like we're going to be skipping that until after.
Well, we can move on. I would, at this point, I think we'll hold off on questions of staff until after we hear the full presentation. And so at this point, I would like to open the public hearing and invite the applicant to present.
Good evening. My name is Seth Moran, and I am one of the architects on the design team. When we get to the question portion of the presentation, I will be joined by Architect Kim Olson and our development partner, Jordan Bass, and one of the community residents, Stuart Wilson. But I'll be presenting the project to you tonight. We are all excited to be back in front of you again. The comments and discussion from the workshop on February 20th was very helpful and encouraging, and we'd like to thank you for your comments. Next slide, please. Obviously, a lot has changed since that time for all of us and for the world. But I just wanted to throw this slide up there because we're moving forward at full speed. We've had a number of virtual meetings with a number of the, or all of the community members. And while I won't explain what cohousing is or is not tonight in the interest of brevity, I will give one anecdote, which is that, apologies for the train noise. I've got that going by my office. That's audible to you. I think it's gone now. Okay. In the time of this pandemic, I've been reading a lot about how cohousing communities have managed the situation with reduced risk through sharing, ordering groceries and picking up medicines and things like that. But probably more importantly, they are maintaining social ties in their support network for these very strong communities. They are not isolated. And this community is not living together, but I think they've already proven that that will be the case for them in the near future. I just wanted to mention that as an anecdote and a promising sign for the future of West Sacramento to have them as part of the city. Next slide, please. So in the interest of brevity, I'm not going to go through most of these graphics. They match what was presented at the workshop, but they are available for the question and answer period, if it's helpful to reference a portion of the project. This is our site plan with an emphasis of active areas and the building entry along G Street and the two entrances to the separate garages placed as far from the street corner as possible. Next slide. The second floor, you might recall, is sort of the heart of the community with a very large open-air central terrace that is adjacent to the common dining area where the members will gather for special events and weekly meals and provide views down to the street and to the entrance. That amassing is repeated on floors three and four. Next slide. Which are two masses linked by an open-air walkway that helps to bring in daylight and breezes and make visual connections to the street and the adjacent properties. Next slide. By now, you've seen the three renderings that we prepared, so I won't go over these in any great detail, but we can certainly come back. So this is the south or G Street elevation. Next slide. This is the shorter west-facing elevation and a close-up of the street intersection, the building corner. Next slide, please. And then this is a view of the project interior, looking at some of the parking area on the ground level and then the second-floor terrace and the walkways that provide access to each of the condominiums. Next slide, please. If it's useful, we have these elevations. I'm going to, on the next couple of slides, we're going to have some enlarged portions of these elevations to highlight some new information. So next slide. A couple of quick details. From the workshop, we heard some comments about mechanical screening. We've made one simple adjustment, which is to move the transformer behind a visually side obscuring fence and access gate, as highlighted with the magenta arrow. And then the diagram on the right side of the slide is a section through the street and the building. And just to demonstrate that the designated zone for rooftop equipment is 20 feet or greater from the parapet. And given the height of the building and the width of the street, you would have to be a very, very, very far ways away to see any of the rooftop equipment on this project. The equipment that we anticipate on the roof will be small-scale. It's primarily to heat and cool the units. So no large boxcars for commercial space on this project. Next slide. So Seamus described the general material palette that is unchanged. Hardy shingle, bit of stucco, the wood accents. And then on the next couple of slides, I would like to highlight one element that may not have been obvious during the workshop and then a proposed adjustment to, potential adjustment to a material that we think is significantly consistent with the application. So next slide, please. So this was difficult to tell in the renderings. There's a snippet on the top-left corner of some vegetation in front of the garage walls. The two portions of the elevations below that, I've highlighted some zigzaggy lines, which would have been difficult to interpret without going to read the keynotes. But essentially, these are a green screen element. Green screen is actually a specific product that's similar to the images on the right. But it could also take the form of cables or mesh. And basically, these are either a window into the garage for fresh air that will be infilled with this material or the material will be applied to the wall, the blank wall face, so that the vegetation, and I believe we have at least three, four, or five feet deep planters in front of these walls, that vegetation can then grow up these chelices. So next slide, please. So same portion of those garage walls. And here, I just want to highlight that the gray portion is, was originally in the application as structural concrete walls. At the time of the application, it was our assumption that those would be required to be concrete for structural reasons. And recent discussions with our structural engineer, that is actually not the case. So what we are asking the Commission to review tonight is that it would be, there may be advantages to using an architectural concrete block. And to be clear, the image on the top-left with the X through that is your traditional gray CMU. That is not what we're proposing. It would be an architectural block that has opportunities for color and texture and pattern, similar to the images that you see at the right side of the slide, which are going to be more like a brick or a stone-looking product. Certainly, we can maintain the concrete walls that were provided in the application, but we think there are some advantages to the concrete block. And we'd love to hear your input on this item. Next slide, please. One of the other comments that we received from the workshop was a request to study additional contrast and color as a means to sort of break up or augment the flatter portions of the elevation. We feel like the south elevation has enough articulation and building mass and combined with the deep recesses at the ground level, that the, that portion of the building is less monolithic than what we see here at the shorter west elevation. So the two arrows that you see on the left and the right are pointing at a accent panel that's adjacent to most of the windows on the project. These panels are a smooth, hardy panel, and they can be painted any color. Our original intent was that these would help to make the façades feel like the ratio of window to wall is greater and just help the overall proportions of the façades. But they were proposed on the 20th of February as a fairly monolithic gray color that's sort of blended in with everything else. So the first thing that we decided to look at was amping up the contrast. So in this case, a light, almost white panel on the left or a dark, say, charcoal gray on the right side. Next slide, please. But we have also been looking at these panels as an opportunity to bring in a little bit more pop of color. So the image on the left uses this sort of orange, burnt-orange accent color that's used at the railings and tying that into the rest of the facade. And the image on the right is a study of looking at a different color, in this case, sort of a sage green. And so we looked at that on all of the elevations, which I believe we're showing on the next slide, please. Yeah, so just an enlargement of here, the south elevation, in full daylight with the light, dark, orange, and green variations. And then the same on the next slide, which is the west elevation shown here. It's sort of a dusk lighting. Again, the light, dark, orange, and green. From the design team's perspective, we were a little apprehensive at first about the color, but we're definitely warming up to it. And I think we would be happy to continue in one of those directions. So I would like to propose that the Commission approve the project, certainly with feedback and any conditions of approval. But we would like the approval to include the final color decision to be verified by the community, since they're participants in the design process, and to trust us to make an informed and appropriate choice and one that would be consistent with what we're showing you here tonight and consistent with the application as submitted. And that really does conclude the presentation. I'm sure some of you have many questions. Have you not seen the presentation, the longer presentation on the, from February? So happy to elaborate on any of the features of this proposal.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Moran. Great, great proposal. It is a, it's a great project. I was looking forward to seeing it come back, and it's been a while, of course, since we've seen this. This was the second time this project has been before the Commission. And again, I'm excited about this type of development. I see it being an asset to our community as well as a great place to live. We did, at the last meeting, focus on a few mostly aesthetic items, and I believe you've hit them all. What you didn't hit, Mr. Laffey did. So I would like to keep the public hearing open, just to make sure that the Commission has an opportunity to ask the applicant questions as well as ask Mr. Laffey questions about the project. I hear, I heard two things that the applicant is seeking input on. One is whether or not the concrete blocks, the architectural concrete blocks, would be okay as an alternative to cement. And then one for input on the color. And I'll just throw mine out there right off the bat. Given the approach to this building, the quality of the product, of the plans, I'm personally good with letting the residents decide the color. Mr. Laffey, is this already a condition? Do we have to deal with this? If, if the group so decides to let the residents decide the color, do we actually need to put a condition on it?
There is a condition that it needs to be substantially compliant with what you're looking at tonight. So it's up to you to determine what kind of flexibility you give staff for what kind of color on those accent panels and then what kind of design for any kind of concrete block that they're looking at. But as long as it's substantially consistent with what you're seeing tonight.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to questions from Commissioners from, for either staff or for the applicant. Ms. Berliner.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I love this. I think this is, I think this is phenomenal. Um, I'm, I'm just, I'm just really excited. I know it sounds really jerky, but I'm really excited. I'm really excited about the limited parking that you guys have and then also just the bike, the bike locker with 42 spaces and then the seven EV chargers. Yes, thank you. So I'm just, I just love it. But I don't have any questions. I just wanted to express how excited I am for this.
All right, thank you. Mr. Leonard.
To the applicants, thank you very much for responding to the comments that we had on the first round. Your summary letter back to staff and to us was helpful in reminding us what those comments were. I would typically just stick exactly to my comments before you've answered them. Thank you for addressing them and for summarizing for us. As it relates to the concrete blocks and actually the color, I would, sorry, the color of the window treatments. I would say by this point, I'm personally satisfied with putting the trust in you guys to make that decision. What makes the most sense to you as to which particular decorative concrete block you want to use and which color to use on the windows? My only comment about colors and little design details like that is I typically just like to avoid any sort of fashion statements that don't age well and that look sort of hokey after a little while, or in some cases, you just, you regret it as soon as you build it. But the care and concern that you've put into this application so far in helping us along in describing things, I heartily trust what you guys would want to decide to do. And so that is my only comment. Thank you very much for your summary and for your feedback.
Okay, I see no other comments except for Vice Chair Austin.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you to the whole applicant team. I'm sure that there's a lot of folks both on this call and not on this call that have contributed to this effort. Really appreciate that. Appreciate the engagement that you've done with the future residents of this development. So I think that's definitely something to acknowledge. And thank you also to the residents and to the applicant team for choosing to build something so special in our town. So thank you for that. I echo Commissioner Leonard's approval of the approaches that you've taken. I was very interested, and I think that, you know, this emerged at the workshop. We're very interested in how the ground floor feels because that's going to matter to the neighboring community, not just the residents. The treatment of the transformer, the kind of specifying some of the architectural components around the blocks, the green screen, have really, I think, make, they're minor and they make... around the blocks, the green screen, really, I think, make their minor and they make a difference. So I think that that's, they're small but valuable changes. So I'm supportive of those changes. Also, I think that the options that you've presented look great. And like Commissioner Leonard, I defer to the design team of the applicants, particularly because they've been so responsive to the future residents so far. So I'm comfortable with, for example, the four examples provided. So I don't know if you, what level of specificity we need in the conditions of approval, but just voicing my support of that. So thank you. And I'm in strong support of staff recommendation when it comes to that.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Sternfels.
Thank you, Chair. Two comments. First, I want to echo Vice Chair's comments and sentiment. I completely agree with her and the other commissioners thus far who have spoken. I did want to just ask, I guess this is more of a request for city staff. If we do indeed move forward on approving this tonight, which I think we will, I am highly sensitive to how much has changed in the last two months and not just the local economy, but the world economy. And I also was sensitive at the last meeting and more so tonight on the fact that many of these residents are putting their life savings and retirements into this project. And so I would just implore city staff to end everyone working on this project, to work as quickly and diligently as possible to make this project a reality moving forward. And not in any way to suggest that we wouldn't otherwise, but recognizing the economic climate we're in, I want to make sure that this project gets going and makes it to the finish line. And certainly want to make sure that whatever we can do to support that we're doing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sternfels. Commissioner Sablon.
Working on that mute button. It's harder than in the chambers. So yeah, just like the other commissioners said, excited about this project, looking forward to seeing it in the Washington district. And you guys were really responsive to all the comments and appreciate that. And yeah, also comfortable with leaving the color and what type of slab to the design team.
All right. Thank you. And Commissioner Castillo.
Sure. Thanks. And just really quick, I don't have questions, but more comments. Really appreciate the design sensitivity to population that you're targeting. I read that it's more targeting seniors and families, bringing them, figuring out ways to bring them together. And it looks like the design that you guys put forward really does that nicely and other different settings that you available for both, pretty much all ages. Love that intergenerational idea, bringing those all individuals together. And I also echo Commissioner Berliner's comment on the sensitivity around molding alternative transportation. I know a lot of projects have come before us and we've been, you know, sensitive to the idea of whether or not we add additional parking or less parking. And here it seems like you strike a balance between parking, but also giving individuals the opportunity to park bikes in a safe location. I'm providing those spaces for the community. I think that's important, particularly as we continue to develop that area with the connectivity with transportation, not just potential railcar one day, but also trails that allow people to ride their bikes, you know, from whatever location it is. So we love that idea and also support giving the community the opportunity to have a say in the color of in the final color. I think it's important to give the community a sense of ownership of this project. And when you give a sense of ownership, there's more buy-in from the community in terms of wanting to actually support something that's going to be within a specific, in a specific area. And so really appreciate the presentation. I think it's very thorough. I love the design. I used to do that Capitol yard. So having a different view of what's currently there is going to definitely be a game changer area. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Castillo. With that, I think we've hit all of the commissioners. Are there any additional questions of the applicant or staff at this time? Okay, seen and hearing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to deliberation. What I heard was the planning commission appears to be okay to defer to the design team and the residents on both the cement blocks, concrete blocks or versus concrete as well as the color on the window treatment or the color pops. There was one suggestion that it potentially be limited to the options that we've seen, although I I'm not sure if that was a whole fast thing. Mr. Laffey, I have actually looked for the condition that would need to be modified. Do we need to provide additional text to you right now or can we make this part of a motion to, if so moved, to modify the paint condition to allow development by the design team and approval by its residents?
You can include it as part of your motion and you can reference the memo they provided with the revisions that they're proposing.
Okay. All right. Any other comments, questions? With that, I would happily seek a motion.
I move to, this is Vice Chair Austin. I move to approve staff recommendation for this item.
Moved by Vice Chair Austin.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sternfels. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Clerk for a roll call vote.
All right. Commissioner Sablon.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Vice Chair Austin.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard.
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfels.
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner. Chair Leibig.
Aye.
Great. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Again, this is an exciting, an exciting process, project. And like Mr. Sternfels, I do want to see this project become a reality. I think it's great. I think it would be great for our community. Looking forward to seeing it. So thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we are moving on to regular item, sorry, regular agenda item number three. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed Fourth Street Homes vesting tentative subdivision map 5186, plan development permit and Washington specific plan minor deviations and design review. Before I turn it over to Ms. Allen, I'm going to ask the the planning commissioner clerk whether or not we have received any public comments on this item.
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. At that point, I'll pass, at this point, I'll pass it over to Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chair Leibig and members of the commission. This project is a tentative subdivision map for condominium purposes, plan development permit and minor deviations from the Washington specific plan, along with design review for the project. The tentative subdivision map would create two lots containing the 25 condominium units along with three ADU units and the projects located at 204 to 218 Fourth Street and 407 B Street. Lot one would contain 21 condo units plus the three ADUs. The ADU units are attached to units 1, 8, and 15. And lot four would contain the remaining four condominium units. The project is accessed from the two alleyways at the northern and southern boundary of lot one and also along the front of B Street. And the three ADU units have access off of Fourth Street. The applicant is requesting a PD permit to allow minor deviations from the Washington specific plan. The applicant is requesting those deviations for setback requirements. The Washington specific plan was adopted back in 1996 and does not accurately reflect the goals and policies of our somewhat newly adopted general plan 2035, which more concentrates on higher infill development and the deviations would allow for this type of development and is similar to projects the planning commission has seen with deviation requests in the past that were also in Washington. The project is also subject to design review, which is also before you tonight. The project, the townhome units are all three stories in height. The bottom level at street level is proposed to be brick veneer. Plaster is used on the upper two units, the upper two levels to create a contrast of materials. The plaster is enhanced with articulated metal screens to break up the areas of plaster and help reduce the building mass. The project also has horizontal fiber composition board siding and strategic locations on the residences. The alternating use of the siding and the plaster helps to add variety to the exterior textures and helps differentiate the residences from each other. I did send a memo to the commission earlier today. I discovered there was an error in the staff report. The first page of the vesting tentative map was the incorrect page and I did send you the correct page. The difference was the page that was swapped out shows the phasing for the project. The rest of the pages of the map were the same. And the applicant in the last attachment on your staff report was requesting that the undergrounding of utilities be waived. Staff is proposing an alternative condition that would require the applicant to be part of any future assessment or financing district for the undergrounding of the utilities. And so staff is proposing that the wording of that condition be changed to the following. It would be the applicant shall waive their right to protest inclusion in a future assessment district or finance mechanism for undergrounding of overhead utilities and install the onsite utilities underground. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here on the teleconference. However, they don't have a presentation for you, but are more than willing to answer any questions the commission might have of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. I am going to go ahead and open the public hearing, just in case there are questions. I first want to say there are several aspects of this project that I commend, including the rooftop decks. We live in a climate and environment that makes rooftop decks a huge asset and I support more going in. I've been, in fact, requesting them. I can't believe we don't have more. So I'm excited about that part of the project. I do see this proposed development in line with other developments in the neighborhood. In fact, we, as a planning commission, previously approved a similar project at this location with just some tweaks in the in the lot lines. I think one, the prior version went to Fifth Street. So so I am hopeful, similar to the last project, that this project also move forward if approved. I would like, Ms. Allen, to see more detail on the paving of the drive aisles and the permeability areas. I had a hard time following that in the drawings. It was, it's just difficult sometimes. It would be nice to have a narrative on the on the pads and whether or not that is, that's you or the applicant. And a couple, couple things. There are 25 units, three ADUs, accessory dwelling units. I had a hard time figuring out which ones those were. So just for, in case anyone else was in my boat, they are actually attached to, actually wrote them down at one point, I think it's units 1, 1, 8, and 15?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, so as I was looking at the language and whatnot, I had a little difficult time discovering that. So I thought I would just share that. So before I get into any of my details, I think maybe we can hear from other planning commissioners if they have any additional questions and then maybe the applicant can address any of our additional needs. So with that, towards the planning commission to see if you have any additional questions or questions that you would like additional information on from the applicant or staff. Mr. Castillo.
Maybe the applicant or staff can help me understand the underground versus overhead electricity poles. I read the memo that they submitted to us. And I guess they're proposing that on one side of the street, the utilities underground, but on the other, I'm just confused. If you can clarify that, please?
This might be a good question for our principal civil engineer, Mark Collier.
Well, unfortunately, I haven't seen the memo, but the both Fourth Street and B Street have overhead utilities across the frontage. And the municipal code requires of subdivisions that those utilities be placed underground at the time of development as a condition of approval of the map. It also gives explicit discretion to the planning commission to waive that if they feel that it's appropriate. So I'm not sure what else you want, what else your question was on that.
Well, the applicant is proposing to leave the poles where they're at now and not put them underground. And I'm just trying to understand what they're proposing as it relates to the amendment, the condition that is in the report. And that, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand what, why they cannot be underground like you stated is in our, you know.
Right. Well, you know, the frontage on B Street is very, very narrow relative to most subdivisions. And to underground across that frontage, you really wouldn't have a reduction in the poles, number of poles. What you would end up with is possibly even an additional pole because of inability to place a transformer on the existing pole and run the line underground down the pole. All you'd have is non-aerial across that narrow frontage strip. I don't think the same kind of scenario applies on Fourth Street. I don't see, from an engineering standpoint or a practical standpoint, any reason why it couldn't be done on Fourth Street. I would like to point out also that the original condition of approval noted, the lines on Fourth Street are pretty large and it wasn't clear at the time that we wrote the condition of approval whether or not they were transmission lines. And if they are transmission lines, they are exempt from the undergrounding. So there was a provision in the condition of approval to at least realign the alignment of the sidewalk so that ADA access was maintained. The pole in its current condition, if you were to run the sidewalk immediately behind the back of curb, it would block ADA access. So I would like to request that you consider keeping that provision of the original condition of approval. So I, I would like to request that you consider keeping that provision of the original condition of approval in the modified condition, if you decide to go with the modified condition.
This is a situation we have faced several times in the Washington neighborhood where you have very small parcels with limited frontage and undergrounding, which is something we, we always, you know, strive for. It, in many cases, it, it turns out to be impractical to do it sort of parcel by parcel. Because like Mark said, you, you may take down the poles on the frontage, but you could easily wind up with another pole on, you know, the front edge of the property next door. Utility, ideally, utility undergrounding, you know, would be done on a, you know, like on a whole, whole block basis, you know, a little more comprehensively. We used to have an undergrounding district in this neighborhood from, you know, many years ago. PG&E had, they called it Rule 20 funding for that. We did do a project out there many years ago for undergrounding. But this has come up on most of the, you know, these smaller infill projects we've seen in Washington over the last, you know, 10 years or so. And it certainly is a cost item, but I try to look at it from a practical, you know, standpoint is, you know, if we, we get a net, if we break even on the number of poles or maybe even have a net loss of one pole, is, is it really worth it? So that's, that's really the question before the commission tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Mr. Castillo, do you have any additional questions or follow-up? No? Okay. I'm going to go to Commissioner Leonard.
Two fast questions, either for staff or the applicant. First one is, where are all the condensers, the, for each individual unit? Are they on the roof? Or are they in other places that I'm not seeing on the site plan?
The condensers would be located on the roof. So
All right.
Visible.
All right. Very good. And because you've got the rooftop deck and the parapet's probably three, two or three, or three feet, three and a half feet.
Forty-two inches minimum. So, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then just on B Street with these utility poles, it looks like the, there's three-phase power up at the top. Rooftop decks on the B Street units, I think it's unit 24 and 25. I don't know if PG&E has physical horizontal spacing requirements for people just something to look out for. I know smud has limitations like that. How far? 15 and that meets it?
Right. Yeah. Yeah, we're good.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
And, and can I just speak to the power pole situation too? The, the issue is on, on B Street. It's because we would end up with putting an additional pole in. And it's only, it's a very short space of front of, along the street there that we would do that. So that's why we're requesting to go to the assessment route.
Very good.
Okay. Vice Chair Austin, you are the only person.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. And yeah, to the, to staff recommendations, I'm, I'm comfortable with staff recommendations. I think it was a very creative solution for a tentative subdivision map to do some infill development. So thank you for that. I see Commissioner Leonard nodding. That was creative and a good creative solution. I'm also comfortable with a request for deviations, minor deviations from the PD of the, the specific plan. And then in regards to design review, I agree that there, it's very consistent with some of the more modern designs that we're seeing, particularly in the bridge district. But as you just saw from the project up before, that's consistent with newer developments that are going in, in the Washington district as well. So appreciate all of that. I approve all those. In regards to the underground utilities, I just want to affirm what Mr. Telly was describing. I totally agree. I think that when you look at communities like Washington, where you have very small, relatively small infill parcels, it would make sense to underground utilities or require that the applicant to develop or underground the utilities if you had a larger parcel. We have a lot of smaller parcels. So it's pretty impressive that we already are seeing, for example, tonight, two infill developments. I'm comfortable with this undergrounding utilities proposal, solution proposed by city staff. The one thing I do want to recommend is that both the applicant and city staff are thoughtful in, in not just paying lip service, but actively putting in a, a plan for how to finance this district because we really do want to underground these, these utilities for a number of reasons, aesthetic, logistic. So I think to, to really support some of the, the transportation and mobility goals that we would like to reach, underground utility is going to be pretty important to that. But it's not cheap and there is, there are more demands on utility resources these days, not fewer. So let's just kind of keep an eye on that. I think we've done a really good job of looking at infrastructure financing in a creative way, but also being thoughtful about having the city not bear undue burden to address that, those infrastructure improvements. But all in all, really impressed with the development. I appreciate the applicant's thoughtful design and I appreciate city staff's work on this, on this application.
Okay. Are there any additional questions of staff or the applicant? I would like to confirm with the applicant that should we adopt the staff's recommended alternative text for undergrounding of the utilities, which commits the applicant to participating in basically the funding of undergrounding them. Should basically the rest of the block go underground, basically you, you participate in that. That's my layman's way of, of describing that, as well as in the meantime, making sure that the poles don't block ADA access on the sidewalk. So I just want to get a, a head nod, at least that you are okay with.
We're, we're, we're okay with that.
Okay. Thank you so much. Always hate to get to the closing the public hearing and then modifying a condition and finding out, no, that's actually not, not okay. So with that, I will close the public hearing. And just to provide a couple of comments, city staff, thank you so much for coming up with a revised text to keep the undergrounding as a potential future option. Our goal is to underground throughout, throughout the city ideally, but especially in these urban areas, it's, it's not just visual, but it's a resiliency matter as well for us as we, as we move into the, the future, of course, stability of, of our neighborhoods. So so I am in favor of staff's recommended text as well as the language that Mark requested the city engineer to maintain the text regarding the sidewalks improvements to allow for better ADA access. So otherwise, it sounds like the commission is generally in favor of this, this project.
Are you seeking?
There before.
Chair Lebig.
Sorry, Ms., Ms. Austin, can you repeat that?
Are you seeking a motion?
I was going to see any last comments, questions. If not, I will happily entertain a motion. Okay, any motions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by, actually, who, who did that?
Sorry, that was Commissioner Leonard.
Mr. Leonard. And Mr. Leonard, are you including the revisions to any of the conditions?
Just the ones that we've discussed, reflecting the participation in, in the future district, undergrounding district.
Okay. For clarification, Mr. Leonard moved to approve with the text recommended by staff as well as maintaining the text regarding ADA access on the sidewalks.
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Castillo. I'm going to turn it over to a Mr. Clerk for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Sternfels.
Aye.
Vice Chair Austin.
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard.
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner.
Aye.
Chair Lebig.
Aye.
With that, we have an unanimous approval. Congratulations and thank you again. I think this is a great project. Definitely have support from our commission, if not the city.
Great. Thank you. And thanks to staff for their hard work on this. It's really great. Thank you.
All right. With that, we're going to move on to general administration function, part two, informal discussion. Ah, hearing none. Well, I will say it, it is great to see everybody again. It's been a while. It's only, you know, via, via conference call or, or teleconferencing. It, it looks like we're probably going to be at this for a while. And although this was our first meeting, it appeared to go very smooth. So I want to thank staff for all the work pulling this together. There, there are many people behind the scenes that you don't see making this possible. So again, thank, thank you staff for all of your work to, to pull this together. And for our community and public for being patient, as this is a unique and different process and we are still, still learning as we go. And I'm sure there will be changes over time. So with that, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
The move.
All right. And a second.
Second.
That was moved by Commissioner Sternfels and taken in by Commissioner Berliner and we are going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Clerk, would you like to facilitate that?
Sorry. Commissioner Sablon.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner.
Aye.
Commissioner Stromphel.
Aye.
Vice Chair Austin.
Aye.
Chair Lebig.
Aye.
All right. Thank you all so much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.